Good morning. This is a continuation of the House Appropriations Committee hearings or our budget testimony. We have a change in our schedule. We were scheduled to have the Secretary of State in twice today and then again on Friday, but we really only need them in once. So we will hear from them on Friday, and that is going to give us some free time right now, which is good because some of us actually have meetings scheduled, like me, at 11:15 with one of my budget areas. But what we're going to do is take out, take the opportunity right now to just kind of debrief what we heard last night in our public hearing testimony. So it is not a formal type thing that we do, but we absolutely do go through the comments and hear from people and discern the trends that we heard last night. So with that, I will certainly take it away. And I know one of the, we certainly heard there remains a lot of need out there. Me personally, the biggest thing that is, that really impacted me is the childcare issue. It impacts anyone who's trying to work, who has kids, and it really makes it difficult if you, I remember, I remember trying to find daycare for my kids, and it wasn't fun back then, so I can't even begin to imagine now. They're big enough, so I don't worry about it.
I might be older than yours, and when I, when I did it, it was really, it was what I, I actually went to some home daycares, and I just left them in tears because there isn't the, today, there's a lot more quality and a lot more oversight. I wasn't in this state, I was in Massachusetts, but, but they were, they were horrible options. They were just, you wouldn't leave your child there. And so, so, so I know how important it is. Even if they're there, you want to be sure there's the quality and all of that, and I think we've done a really good job with that kind of oversight. You know, you want, I mean, you're leaving your child, and you want them to be okay.
Well, we were fortunate, we had, we had good daycares, just a couple of them. It was, do you have a spot for the day? And it was, we finally were able to come up with something, so. But to me, it's a, it is a problem that is keeping people out of the workforce. We heard last, the, one of the last, the last person, I think she was last, her husband's not going to be working because the daycare that they have is going to be the husband. Now, personally, as a stay-at-home dad, I think that's a wonderful thing, but what does that do to their budget? And what does that do to the business that he left? You know, there's, it's not just about one person, it's, there's a trickle-down effect, so.
Peter, I think that emphasis that we heard, at least some of those we heard last night, was not so much on the parents' financial responsibility, although, of course, that's significant, but it was more about pay ranges for the educators, for the staff, order to keep staff available. So, you know, we've got lots of programs in terms of this app and related programs that certainly clearly knows a lot more about than I do, that assist parents, their financial contribution, but it sounded like the people we heard from were more interested in having more support for the staff person.
And I think even beyond that, beyond childcare, it's like every system that we have could use more funding. It's been underfunded, and I think, you know, once again, to me, it demonstrated, COVID has sort of laid bare the brokenness of so many of our systems and the underfundedness of so many of our systems that people have been hanging on for a long time.
That's certainly true, and it certainly has demonstrated the interconnectivity of the entire economy. You can't pull on one string without a whole bunch of other strings getting real short, and so it's, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
What clicked in my mind was childcare centers per se, but also the parent-child centers, which are two different sets of entities involved in childcare. So just wanted to have those parent-child centers on the radar screen also.
Yes, the parent-child centers also run daycare. They do many things, they also run daycares. So, so that was my, that was, you know, overarching. I mean, there's a lot of need, but that one really struck a chord, and maybe it's because, you know, we, we're all parents, and once upon a time, we all wrestled with the, I think, I've got to find daycare for my kids. So that one kind of struck a chord to me. So let me just go around the table instead of having, you know, hands up, that kind of thing, and ask each, each of you. And one of the things we will have to do, we haven't had time yet to read the submitted testimony, but we will. So, Maida, what really struck you, please?
Well, I'd like to pass for the moment and just reading, since my brain was totally focused on.
On getting ready for Secretary of State.
Yes. So if it's okay, I'd like to be able to pass and come back.
Certainly. Representative Townsend is our, is our budget representative to the Secretary of State's office, so she was all plugged in and ready to go, and then I told her, literally, as you heard, that we're rescheduled for Friday, so. Representative Feltes?
Well, I'm just looking through my notes here. We had two or three requests for what they call full funding of V H C B, and I think they meant by that, the statutory limit that has in full funding, and I was going to double-check that unfunded liability report to find out what that was. But I would be curious to compare what actually is being funded for V H C B and add to that extra ARPA money that we're spending on things like conservation and housing, to see what that total comes up to. And I suspect it's certain of far more than what V H C B is statutorily allowed to have or eligible to have. And, you know, if the shortfall is fairly small, but we're making up for it with all this other extra ARPA stuff, then I think that's something we need to consider.
I, I was thinking the same thing last night, that we have put a significant amount of money, rightly so, into V H C B to get a lot of things on the ground. But the, the key difference in my mind, however, is ARPA money is more restrictive than general fund money. So, you know, it, but we only have so much general fund money, and we have so much ARPA money, so it does make sense to.
The same place, is what you're saying?
Yes.
A little less, but you're right, but.
Yep. We'll go around again, look the table again here, so, you know, yeah, no, I, I thought the same thing. Representative Harrison?
Well, I was going to mention the same thing. There was a couple of different organizations that mentioned full funding, and I don't know necessarily what are we short, what does that mean in dollars? The other thing that struck me, obviously, it's an opportunity for people, they don't come in to a public hearing and say, you know, cut the budget for X, Y, Z, you know, it's their opportunity to ask. What concerns me a little bit, maybe it shouldn't, but, you know, there are a lot of good causes out there, but every time you ask for increases in base funding, what does that do to our bottom line going forward? And I think we just have to have a better understanding. If we want to give, you know, $6 million to the Food Bank, which now looking more and more like ongoing funding, what do we reduce to offset that? Or is the ongoing revenue going to do that without jeopardizing some of the other things we're, we're doing? So I just, we need to have a better understanding of that, but there were, obviously, there were some one-time asks, and there was, but there was also a lot of base funding increases. I mean, Working Lands, it's a great program, you know, $3 million extra a year over the $1 million we've allocated. I mean, three years is sounding more and more like base funding increase to me. One year is, is a little different if it was for a single project, but it's just something we all have to be cognizant of.
And this committee has historically supported well Working Lands, and of course, I believe we have a recommendation to bring Working Lands, like, I don't remember if it's in the, I don't know who has that budget, it's probably.
Christian.
To bring us up to an even million, I think, on the base this year, so there is.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not passing.
No, I know that.
All I'm saying is, they're, they're sounding more and more like ongoing base budget items, so that's going to beg some, really, either that, two years from now, I'm not sure, I want to be on this committee, quite frankly, because it's going to be hard, you know, getting back to reality. So just a caution, that's all.
And I will add, so that the, anyone who is watching would understand that our, our revenue growth in out years for '23, from '22 to '23 budget year was quite significant, but from '23 to '24 and '24 to '25 and going forward, you're back in the 2% range. So, so hence your comment about having to make hard choices.
Budget, you know, like salaries and benefits are going to continue to increase, you know, probably in the 3% to 4% range.
Yeah.
Not more, but they could. So it's going to create a lot of pressures that I just think we have to be.
Cognizant of.
Cognizant of.
Yep, no, well, point well made. Thank you.
So they actually were asking for $15 million for the Working Lands last night.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
We gave them an additional $3 million, I think.
So $5 million a year.
No, 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 $15 million a year for three years.
I thought you said over three.
Well, no, it was for a year for three years. It was for each year, $15 million for each year. I mean, that, when I was on the Working Lands Council that created the Working Lands Board, that was the original goal, they, that's like, let's go bold, and they got a, you know, a million or a little less, so. And then I was on the, I was on the Working Lands Board until I got elected, and then it was a conflict, so I couldn't be on it. But the money is certainly well spent, $15 million is a huge asset.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I think certainly we want to support them, not necessarily to that amount, but at least the million that, you know, we usually do, because they, they, they're one of the few places where they look at return on investment and can provide us a true answer to, is anyone better off? You know, how much have we done? That's actually means something, so that's been a really good thing. But, you know, again, the themes of childcare and housing, I was going to say that Vermont Housing and Conservation, childcare and housing have been the two biggest issues that we hear from our constituents and we hear from organizations, and that's really what people were talking about, in addition to lots of pay increases for the underfunded agencies, which is.
Care providers.
So many of them, and I certainly understand that, and it's scary to think about how we're going to make all that work and maintain the systems and find the money or not find the money, and what happens if we don't find the money? So it's challenging times.
Indeed. I think every time is challenging, but, you know, certainly.
Having a lot of money is challenging.
It is, but then overlaid with the pandemic, it'll be hard to end, if it ever does.
Elevating.
Trevor?
Yeah.
And maybe you could talk a little bit about the, the one retired Department of Corrections member who talked about a real problem and recommended a.
Department of Housing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's been talked about. They obviously have, that's a real issue. What the answer is to that right now? Remember, the V A A, we gave them $5 million for retention.
Yes.
For stuff, that's not going to resolve itself, effectively. We have a new commissioner, and it'll be interesting to see how he chooses to address some of these issues. It's not all about money, it's also about culture, is what we're just speaking about when we talk about. Certainly took note of that, and I'll be having ongoing conversations with the U.S. Department of Corrections. If I, if I may turn to other things that are not big dollar items, but I, but I think they're important. One was the RPC asked for some additional funding. I think they provided valuable services to towns, particularly smaller towns. My towns are Jericho and Upper Hill, but not large towns. And I chaired the planning commission, I chaired the conservation committee, and those smaller towns and those commissions rely heavily on the work that we do, which is top-notch work. And I, so I think that's, you look like you can't quite hear me, am I not?
Yeah, not quite loud enough, but.
Okay, all right. But that's, that's one thing, and I think the other one that, that's important to me also is the Vermont Access Network, the ban. And I think what you have to go back is look at how they're being funded and how that funding's going away, right? Cable fees and things like that, whole issue of special, special funds supporting programming. We just got the report from J F O on all these fees and ones in criminal justice system and things like that, but it's the same issue. And so they're coming to us to say, you know, and they, again, they're, they're one of those groups that provide valuable services to our communities, and, and I think it's something that's, I personally feel we need to support. And again, I think we have to figure out how we're going to fund them all the time, because that funding source is going to continue to decline, and they're going to continue to come back and say, we need help.
Does anyone remember, is the Joint Fiscal Office working on some type of study regarding the ongoing funding? It's been mentioned that there's.
We already have a study a couple of years.
There's a report we just received. I'll have Teresa put it on the website or, or certainly, I have the other day. It was on the criminal justice revenues, which are very much, but, but they took a broad look at special funds, right? And, and so it's all in that context. There was a real focus on crime victim services in that report, but it's a very well-funded report, it's quite extensive, so I'll make sure you get a copy of that and take a look at it.
Thank you.
You can translate that to all the sectors, right?
There was a 100-page report on the ban a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And they didn't come to any real conclusions. Well, the real conclusion was, we needed to change the telecommunications law that related to cable companies and things like that. And the reason that the vans people have come in this year and asked for the V A A and for this next year as well, is that they couldn't get a commitment from the Energy and Technology Committee or the Ways and Means Committee to sit down and tackle that whole issue of the telecommunications law this year. And those two committees advised these folks to just go ask for bridge funding, which they've done, but I think if we do something like that, we need to somehow incorporate the requirement that there is another study, or not another study, but, you know, somebody to actually sit down and take a look at those issues and try to come up with another solution to the problem. You know, and I don't know that we can require those committees to tackle that topic, or how you do that politically, but it's in their jurisdiction to figure out how to make this work if they agree, as I think most people would, that this is a legitimate function, and we need to figure out how to fund it. But unless they're going to come to us every year and ask for, you know, and the 600 is just their shortfall, and under the current system, you know, their revenue keeps declining, and so next year they'll come back and ask for a million, and the year after that, you know, it will be more and more. So we need to figure out a long-term solution. And I don't know how we tie that into, if we were to appropriate the money, but also in the budget somehow tie in a requirement that we have to look at it seriously.
Yeah, we cannot encumber the future legislatures to do anything. The only thing we can do, and I just, it's somehow, how do we remind ourselves that next year, at the start of the biennium, we need to task those two committees with working this aspect, so that, so that, you know, we're not having the same discussion in February, two years from now.
Right, right. Some of those committees need to, and, and of course, membership can change.
Sure.
On those committees and chairs and speaker and protests and all that can change, so you're not sure that would be the same priority in another biennium.
Yep. So I just want to turn to Maria and ask, has there ever been a way for this committee to send itself a message into the future, so to speak, to remind itself to do something? Because at the start of a biennium, you know, you're organizationally a little bit behind, this committee's a little different, but there's always a new member. Maria?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's it.
That's the reason why I'm turning around and asking, you know? Because it's, it's, again, it's going to be very easy to forget to do this, and if we forget to do this, then February next year, we're going to, or, and/or the year after, we're going to be saying, we need to do something with those committees to get them moving, so.
Right, I mean, this is the kind of thing that you want the administration to be part of, or is it just the legislature?
Well, Marty, your suggestion? The administration, should the administration be part of this, or just the legislature trying to work through the, the issues with the current law?
The conclusion of the last reporting, and everybody, is it's the law that makes it as a problem, and of course, that's the legislature.
Yep.
Administration would certainly be involved in it, I mean, it would be the Public Service Department.
Yep.
That controls or has purview of telecommunications and all of that.
So perhaps if we were to put in the budget that the Public Service Department shall inform the relevant committees of what, you know, what's going on next year?
To give them an update, or, yeah, okay, so I'm going to put it on my list of things that we need to remember to address.
Yes.
And then we can think about how to actually do it best way.
Good, thank you. Thank you, because that is important. I do, I do agree with everything that's been said. The, our PEG TV, they actually, my, my PEG TV got the name PEG, even though they're all, they're all PEG TVs, but they were able to grab the name PEG. It's, it's an important aspect, and it's a bedrock aspect of rolling, so, thank you. Bob, what struck you last night?
The numbers. You know, I fear for the state, because we're, we're in a world of $50 million computers that involves, and these things just pop there, out there, all over the place, just waiting for us to glance that way, there's another $50 million computer, we're working on one at D M B right now, that will only be half-paid for after this year. I mean, and when the numbers come in, I, I think that's the longest list, maybe I'm mistaken, that's the longest list of wants, social wants, for the most part, that I've ever seen in these hearings that we have. And, and I have nothing against any of them, but, yeah, I think the legislature would be, as far as I'm concerned, well-advised, step lightly into the future, because we've had a good past, even through COVID, with all this money coming down from the federal government that I'm not going to have to pay for, but your kids are, you know? I just fear for where we're going if we keep suffering into money issues. We've got 630,000 flat people in the state, that's it, new businesses, it's not big, but... So, you know, I don't have any great demands, you know? Yeah, I, I keep my ear to the rail. I mean, I think, I, I'm sorry, no, I'm not sorry, but I come from a business world where we have to do that. We can't just say to every job you go on, well, it's going to be more money than I told you. You can't do that. So anyways, that's where I come from, and I think it's, we're entering, I think, an unstable time. I don't know any more about it than that.
So you, you started off, and one of the, one of the things you mentioned was the technology needs, and you said that D M B and they are, there's an enormous project going on over there. It really is in our.
They're just sitting there waiting, they're turning.
Sure. So, so, and we heard a couple of technology needs last night, not, not many, but it goes hand in hand with what I'm going to throw out there as a number, I think was a billion dollars that is needed to bring our technology modernization up to speed, and of course.
Hundred million a year for 10 years.
Yeah, I was right, billion dollars.
Well, the time to do that.
Sound like you want it.
Yeah, yeah, no, so it's.
That's something I've discussed with A D S.
Yeah, so it's, it's, something's got to give, and we don't know what the something, well, we know what the something is, it's called all the computer systems will give, but how do you fix them? Because, you know, the $100 million a year over 10 years, and we're, we can't come up with $100 million, no?
I don't, this, no, this is the place to discuss it.
Right, no, it isn't.
The kind of, the theory is that now IT technology is going to cloud-based services, and it's going to software as a service, which means that when you buy this expensive thing to start, the vendor is required to keep it updated all the time. So, so the customer is not out buying servers, we're not buying these hardware, we're not buying a lot of other stuff. We pay high licensing fees every year, but in order, but that gives us service that is updated all the time, and so in the background, that's being done on these big new systems so that we don't get hit with an upgrade cost of $5 million, another $5 million, another $5 million. But I don't know if that's the way the industry is going to continue to go, I have no idea. But, you know, that's what, that's A D S's philosophy, what they're doing. They're getting away from proprietary stuff, from our owning the equipment, from our owning the servers, and you put it onto a vendor, and, and they have the responsibility to get keeping it up. The business lot, the business functionality of all that, I, I don't know enough to write this on that, but my own A D S, that's the process.
Thus, if, if I'm right, once we upgrade to a new vendor and we lock ourselves into, or say, we want the software as a service, theoretically, the access system, which is closing in on 50 years old.
Yeah.
The agency of human services, but if, if it were to be called Access today, we purchased Access, 10 years from now, we would have all new software behind it, and we would just continue to pay the annual fee or whatever. And, and it wouldn't be, absolutely.
Right, right, that's, that's.
Theoretically.
Well, we, we do that now with, like, so I get an annual subscription to Microsoft Word on my Apple laptop, and I don't have to deal with it, and I don't have, you know, and they do all the upgrades, and they take care of it, and it used to be I'd have to download upgrades, and you'd pay for more, and it's just, it's less expensive, it's more efficient, and you don't have to spend all your time thinking, I don't need staff.
It's always right.
But it's big, but upfront, and, and the annual expenses.
Either way, but it's a lot less expensive to pay for it off-the-shelf than it is proprietary, because then you find out five years down the road that it is really what you want, and the laws have changed, and now you have to do something else, and then you have to find technicians to recode, and it's a lot more expensive.
I get all that, but still costs, so.
Yeah, life costs.
Life cycle costs. Okay. Kimberly?
Yes, to the topic of V H C B, what really struck me last night is hearing clearly about both components, hearing about the conservation and agricultural-based work they do. I found that a good reminder, and Maria had been working on a spreadsheet that Teresa just emailed to all of you, it came into your inbox at 10:32 a.m., and it lays out what's been happening with the property transfer tax over time, and if you flip it over on the back, there's a section that lays out some of the things we've been doing in terms of one-time funding. So I think you'll find that interesting.
Thank you.
The other piece, I think Trevor was talking about, it's the RPCs, I thought, given all the ARPA funds that are going out and all that are going to be coming down the pike in terms of the I I J A, them being the federal dollars, bolstering that capacity seems to me a wise thing. There was reference, Marty, to the RPC statutory construct, which I know is right in the same section as V H C B, but I don't actually know if it's the same. Is it a hack thing? I'd have to look at that.
It, it's mentioned in, and I meant to, our unfunded liability report, you know?
Okay, yes.
And they say, how much is by statute the RPCs are supposed to get, it's a certain percentage broken down.
Yeah.
And then it worked for, how much is really being appropriate.
Okay, good, I'll, I'll look at that, yeah. And then, you know, Bob, I take your point on the whole technology thing, because one of the places that that popped up is the discussion of children's integrative services. They were asking for a 1.8 million boost, so that would bring them to 13.3 in fiscal year '23, and then they were talking about one-time money of 1.6 million for their statewide data. And Marty, I would love to know if you've heard anything about that from A D S or others, I'd have to poke into that. I remember a discussion about it, but it's been a while, and I just have to pull that back up.
Could that be part of the B F U S? Could that be part of the B F U S, their new B F U S program?
I, I should know, but I honestly
I don't
Because we have the B F U S and then we have the C C W I S. And then the B F U S has been renamed the C D D I S. And so I kind of lost track of all the threads. Can't make this stuff up, right? You know? And then the, the piece about frontline workers, I think that came through loud and clear. And I think I'll stop there. Those, those are some things that also caught my attention.
Okay. So one of the things I want to do is the, all the acronym, the acronym soup that we just heard was all in information systems, IT systems that was being discussed. So that's what that was. And I'm not even going to go into what the acronyms mean because I'd get it wrong myself.
Related to children.
Yes. Ada, what struck you last night, now that you've got a chance to think about it?
Well, certainly everything everyone gets spoken to. And it check, I do want to add a couple to the list, which has already been mentioned. But as a context, just earlier this week, a friend of mine made the inquiry as to, wasn't our work here on house appropriations so much easier now? And I, I was dumbfounded. And she said, because you've got all that money, you can, you know, you don't, and I truly needed to explain to her the facts of our life here, that at least from my perspective, it has made it more difficult. Because granted, there is a lot of money, but the needs of people are acute. And how to make sure the one-time money is used absolutely on one-time expenses and that we don't dig ourselves a hole by misapplying one-time funds, all of that sort of thing. And listening to, to the folks who spoke last night, that's their reality. They would, you know, I firmly believe that people aren't making things up. They are expressing to us the reality that they're living in their respective worlds and perceive that we got this boatload of money without necessarily clearly understanding that we can't just, you know, here it is, because we have to apply it in certain ways and there are requirements from the federal level. All of that. All that said, I just wanted to say
I agree with you.
People, wow, yeah. And my heart, it rings my heart, listening to folks describe what they're asking for because they need what's being asked for on behalf of the people with whom they work and knowing that we can't just say, well, of course, but we do our best to find a way. I do want to make sure it's not lost in, in the multiplicity of needs which were articulated last night. But there was a request from more than a couple of people, $500,000 for farm to school and $500 in the gov, that the governor's recommended budget for local purchasing related to farms and food, you know?
Yes.
And I thought it was another way in which, as long as we keep it on the radar screen, to support our, our farmers, however many of them we have still with us, as well as to provide good wholesome nutrition for folks. Another piece that I wanted to mention, so it doesn't get lost, the Vermont Network. And we've got to get more information on this. I didn't quite understand. There were two pieces, 48,000, the Vermont Network, which works
Domestic violence.
Domestic violence, yes. I'm thinking of folks who might be listening.
Yes.
48,000 for legal aid that would cover from January through September. It's apparently a hole that they've got there for
That's actually from
July through
The B A had money covering that shortfall.
Oh, so this is not a new shortfall.
But they won't gain access to that grant until September.
Probably October.
They're trying to look to cover July to September.
Yeah, it's, it's probably a federal fiscal year type grant. So it starts on the first of October there. Yeah, so that's, that's what they're trying to do.
They're looking to fill those J W A, three, four months.
Correct.
48,000 and then 100,000, something about housing assessment.
Yes.
And it wasn't the same kind of housing issue that we think of.
Yeah, I have, I
Information.
Yeah, I have something from them on that. I can forward that.
Okay.
It's transitional housing, transitional. It's actually a study. Look at that. Apparently that piece has been missing from other work.
There was a related transitional housing kind of thing that I've never, that I've not heard before at, at our hearings. It was from Mr. Dalton talking about a special, a different kind of recovery house. We have recovery
Yes.
It was a specialized recovery center for justice-involved individuals.
Yes.
And I thought that that parroted a little, a little delving into to find out just what if, if we've got a population for which there is no appropriate kind of service in place, we ought to
Some, it's, it's the Recovery Housing Network around the state. They, they each do things a little differently. They all offer a drop-in center to help people that are looking to, to recover without, without substituting one substance for, for the substance that they've become addicted to. So it's, it's a sober recovery type, type of, type of thing. Turning Point Centers do this. Some of the Turning Point Centers actually go into the local jails. I know the one in Raleigh does, goes into the local jail and begins to work with the inmates in the local jail, not just before they're, they're going to get out, but they work with the inmates in the local jail to try to, to help them get clean such that when they do come out, they can, they can continue down that path. It's, it's, it is as hard a thing to do, I think, as anything that any human would ever endeavor to do, which is try to, you know, change the way that they daily function. So it's, it's really important with this group, and I have asked for more information. The Recovery Center for Justice Involved Youth would be, would work at all of our jails to help that occur. I need to find out how they would, would overlap with, with, with recovery, how's with recovery centers that already do it. But yes.
The question, this reminds me of a sticky note that I popped up. We heard about the tobacco fund settlement going away, but we also heard from Attorney General Donovan and others about a potential opioid settlement. And that would frankly seem a really natural fit, but I don't know where they stand with that. But that's just something that when I heard Tom Dalton speaking, I was like, what's up with the opioid settlement funds? And that might be something to ask the A G's office about. I don't know.
And who, is it, oh.
It was Josh Diamond.
Yes, but who is it among us that has the A G's office?
I'm sorry.
Do you have Attorney General?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just curious to what might be happening with the opioid settlement funds because we heard last night about, you know, tobacco settlement funds going away and to Peter's discussion about recovery housing.
So the funds, as I understand it, are very restrictive to certain categories and the Human Services Committee is working on legislation that will set up a special fund, which I guess is required. 15% of the, of the, 15% will go to the general fund, but it's got to still be used for those opioid-related purposes.
And while you're looking that up, I will add this. During my discussions with the Vermont Department of Health, and I may have mentioned this already, but I'll mention it again, the recovery houses, the Turning Points that we have out in Vermont, they have not been eligible to receive Medicaid money because they're not under the 1115 waiver. So this year, when the Department of, when the Agency of Human Services went to renew the 1115 waiver with the federal government, CMS, they asked that to be included. So if it, if it, and let's face it, it's a pretty minuscule codicil of, of a very large document. If that is in fact included, it will allow the, the Turning Point Centers to then be, we can allocate Medicaid funding to them in the future, which would, which would really help. Now, it won't be for this budget. It would be for the next year's budget. But yes.
So if on my notes, 70% of the settlement, and when I say settlement, there's 53 million over 18 years, and then there's 12 and a half million over 10 years. There was two different settlements. One was with J and J and the other is whoever was all involved in the bigger one.
Or something.
70% of those monies go into a, what they call an abatement fund, which is what Human Services is working on. 15% of that money goes to actual towns for related purposes and 15% will go into the general fund for related purposes. So I think the bumper guards for all this will be in Human Services for a budget. Now, I asked a question and I didn't get an answer, no. We spend a lot of general fund money for, you know, these related issues. And it may be something that we can say, we're spending, yes, we're spending 10 million on, and part of that can go towards us or we can get some reimbursement. But I, I, I think we'll have to wait and see if we see Human Services.
So one of the things, and just to let everybody know, time-wise, I want to finish in about three or four minutes here. I have an 1115 with a, with a budget. So I'd like to finish up and then give each of you time to work through what you need to do. We always have something to do, period. The other thing, obviously, we have, we have written input that was given us and I haven't read any of it yet. I mean, it was last night, so I haven't read any of it yet. So we do need to do that. Ada, you look, you look like you have something else.
Just because I think Kimberly first brought up echo door, the tobacco fund.
Yes.
I think we've all heard in writing from, anyway, heard in writing about a million dollars
Yes.
To go toward tobacco cessation.
So Maria, would you send that sheet to everyone, please? The tobacco sheet, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I asked for this, you remember, a month ago. It, you've always got it. So this will, this will kind of update it. I'm not going to go any further because it's not fresh in my memory exactly what our status is, but yes, yeah. So there's, there's a sheet that, that explains where we are with that. But it's, the master settlement is not necessarily going away. I just am not sure that we're spending enough money to be able to, to draw down or match. So I'm, I need to, I, don't, don't take that to the bank. I need to refresh my memory.
And from a health perspective.
So Peter, in the A G's budget book, they actually list the amount per year. There was a bump for a few years because of another
Correct.
settlement, supplementary settlement. But it surprised me that it's still going on. It's like $22 million a year.
Correct.
So it's, it's still there.
Yep.
It's the health folks we've been hearing from with regard to that $1 million act.
Correct.
The heart folks and
Correct, correct. So, okay. Well, that was, I think that that was helpful. Kind of got some of the issues out on the table. It caused us to think out loud what we, you know, what we thought of last night, and that's always helpful to us. Obviously, we have a, another, another public testimony at 3 o'clock today. And in between then, we have, we have a budget at 1 o'clock. It's, the National Guard is coming in at 1. We've got them until 1:45. So, and then, and then we'll adjourn and then at 3 o'clock, we'll start our public hearing.